Good morning, everybody. I'm going to start as it's 9:30. For the purposes of the recording, it's Wednesday, the 26th of January, 9:30. Welcome to this morning's Planning Development Control Committee. First of all, I will introduce the committee and the officers who are sitting around the table. My name is Theresa Adams and I am Chair of the committee. To my right is my Vice Chair, Councillor Jane Rutter. And the other members of the committee are sitting down on two sides, all with their names in front. To my left is Julie Pennick, who is on the need to chair, well, she hasn't got her title. You've had a Department Service League appointment, Jane. Thank you. And then the Case Officer will always be sitting there. And for the first application, it's Catherine Watson. And then on the other end of the table, we have our legal representative here in the Sutherland. And looking after the clerking of the meeting, Matthew Watson. Just, we're not expecting there to be a fire drill today. But if the fire alarm does ring, then please leave quickly but quietly. And follow the instructions that you'll be given by the monitor who will appear. The assembly point is in Abbey Gardens, out to your left moment. All right. Could you remind you to turn your mobile phones off or put them in airplane mode or silent? And just a reminder that the proceedings today are being recorded and streamed live to any members of the public who wish to listen to them. And then also, as you will see on the guidance notes which was on your chair, they will then go on to the council's YouTube after the meeting where they will remain. As we have a large number, we will be taking a five-minute break at the end of the first application so that we can sanitise all the stations that have been used. So we move on to the agenda. Apologies, Deputy Members.
Morning Chair, thank you. No apologies and all members of the committee are present.
Thank you. Disclosures of interests. Councillor Edwards.
Thank you Chair. In view of the very close proximity of the site in Item Six to my home, I wish to declare a prejudicial concern on the community interest and I shall withdraw during the discussion of that item.
Thank you. And you will be leaving the room, I think, at that point and not taking part in the proceeding.
That is correct.
We're calling back in. Then the minutes, which was chaired by the Vice Chair. Councillor Rutter, are you happy with those? Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And then the update sheet, members, would you have in front of you? Can I have acceptance of the update sheet?
Agreed.
Thank you. Which takes us on to the first planning application, business item six, Thames and Cross Road. Just find my place in the report. Construction of a new three-bedroom dwelling facing Edgar Road. And the Case Officer is Catherine Watson. And when you're ready, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you Chair. The application is for a new three-bedroom dwelling within the rear garden of Number 10 St Cross Road. It's situated at the rear of the garden, which is west of the existing dwelling. So here you can see the existing site plan with the site in question outlined in red. And then here we can see the proposed site plan. So we've got Number 10, the existing property on the right-hand side. And then the new dwelling on the left-hand side. And then here we can see some floor plans. So this is the basement plan. So we've got open plan kitchen, dining, bin store on the patio, a bike store and also space for air source heat pumps. Then on the proposed upper ground floor plan, we've got living room, office and entrance wall. Proposed first floor plan, we've got two of the bedrooms and then we've got a terrace with the balcony. And then proposed second floor plan, we've got one bedroom and an en suite. And then here we've got the proposed roof plan showing to the front one dormer and to the rear two dormers. So here we have the elevation. So the left-hand side is the front elevation. Materials are brick and the roof is to be a standing seam metal. On the right-hand side, we've got the rear elevation. So here you can see that there's quite significant drop in level from the front of the property, which front end road, to the rear, which the garden slopes downwards from west to east. And then here we have the side elevations. So we've got on the left-hand side, you can see this is the front of the property on this extreme left-hand side. And the rear, and then we've got the dormers shown. And on the right-hand side, we've got the north elevation with the front on the extreme right of that image. Here we have a street elevation. This is taken from Edgar Road. So we can see the proposed dwelling in the middle here. To the left is a recently completed development, part of the wider Radley House scheme. Development to five terraces as traditional in character. And the proposed dwelling seeks, takes some of its visible cues from that development. On the bottom, again, we can see in close-up the relationship between the new dwelling and the terraces. And just to point out that the roof, the ridge of the new dwelling is slightly lower than the terraces to the left-hand side. And then here we've got the section. So this also demonstrates the difference in level. So the top image, we've got on the left-hand side, we've got the proposed dwelling. So just here we've got Edgar Road, proposed dwelling. Behind it, you can see the mansard roof of the new terrace. Then on the right-hand side, so the boundary line is down there at the middle between the new dwelling and the existing Number 10. On the right-hand side of that image is the existing property at Number 10. And then right of that is St Cross Road. And then to the bottom, then there's a more detailed section through the proposed dwelling. So here we can see the location of the terrace and the change in the ground levels. So here we've got some photos of the site. So on the left-hand side, this is looking from Edgar Road, where the two garages with white doors are, that's where the proposed dwelling will be. And then you can also see the end elevation of the new terrace. To the right, this is also on Edgar Road but looking southwards towards the site. So at the end of the new terrace, you can just about see the site. And, sorry, be from the north. So this is also a closer view. So we've got the new terrace and then you can just see the white garage doors. And then on the right-hand side, we've got the, again, we can see the garage. And then this is looking from the south on Edgar Road, again, to look at the site. And then on the right-hand side, a view from within the garden of the site. And so the new dwelling will be approximately here. And you can see on the opposite side of the road Dubuhaus, which is Winchester College accommodation. And it's also listed at Grade Two. And then at the left-hand side, within the side, looking towards the south-west. So again, just in this corner, you can see Dubuhaus. And then another development on the same side of Edgar Road as proposed development. And then the right-hand side, see the rear of the existing dwelling at Thames and Cross. So we've got a conservatory here. Also just to point out that planning consent was recently given at Number 10 for the installation of a dormer onto the rear roof elevation. And that ends the presentation. My recommendation is to permit, subject to the conditions contained in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we now go on to the public speaking and objectors. And I believe the three original objectors have agreed that Mr Robert Carter will speak on behalf of all three of them. So Mr Carter, you have three minutes when you're ready.
Oh, she just pressed that the whole time.
No, 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 you just press it once and a light will come on. It's not on yet. Oh, it's not working.
Okay, I'll start, yeah?
Is it working?
The timer starts when you start speaking.
Yeah, the clock. And the clock will come onto the screen so that you, as you can see, so that it will go back to three minutes. So when you're ready, the clock will start.
Okay, I live at Number 12 St Cross Road, right next door to the site. And there are just too many issues raised by the objectors that the planners have chosen to ignore or to make light of. Firstly, it's quite preposterous to claim that the problem of overlooking to the rear of the proposed site will be solved by putting up a glass balcony, balustrade on the balcony. This balustrade will be 1.4 metres high and any adult of average height can simply look over it. And the planners haven't mentioned the fact that the whole of the rest of that elevation is covered with windows and balconies, which would badly intrude on the neighbour's privacy. On the front of the building, this looks directly into the boys' dormitories at Dubuhaus, which contravenes the 2004 Children's Act, which places a duty of care on local authorities to actively engage in child safeguarding. The planners have failed to mention that the south-facing elevation of the house has no windows at all. And it would be a three-storey-high blanked brick wall. The planners rightly say that the garages are an eyesore, but they are not visible from afar. Whereas this wall certainly would be and would make a very negative impact on the whole of the street scene. And the house, if built, would be roughly nine times the size of the garages, which is clear proof of overdevelopment. As for the storage of bins on the St Cross Road side of Number 10, the six students living there generate a very large amount of rubbish and they have more bins allocated to them than normal residents. And the planners have failed to mention with this dormer, they're increasing the number of students from six to eight. So even more bins are going to be needed. It's surprising that the planners are recommending approval when there are so many technical and design issues still to be resolved, namely Numbers 4, 5, 8, 12 and 15 in the Case Officer's list of conditions, particularly Number 8, which is to do with drainage, which is a very serious problem. Nobody has thought through. So lastly, there is a strong feeling among local residents that we have not been listened to, at least until today. It can't be right that this developer, assisted by the planners, can simply get what he wants. He doesn't live in Winchester, nor does his architect, nor do the owners of Number 10. If any of them cared about our local community, they wouldn't be doing this. Despite the various consultations between the developer and the planners, not one local neighbour has been consulted at any time. And this committee offices our only chance of address. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And it could be that there are some supplementary clarification questions for you from the committee. Councillor Rutter.
Thank you Chair. Could you explain to me the drainage issues you mentioned? Could you enlarge on the drainage issues?
Yes.
Please.
Yes. It's, one proposal is to, which seems to be what they want to do, is to take foul water and surface water, I would add, from this new house at Number 10, down the garden to Number 10 itself on St Cross Road, where it would go out under our house at Number 12. And we've already experienced sewage leaking into our house because of the large number of students living next door. So this would, with the increased number of students and adding this new three-bedroom house, does that answer your question? Thank you.
Thank you. And Councillor Reed.
Chair, can you just go back over the, what is directly opposite? You said something about children and the right of...
Yes. Dubuhaus boarding house from Winchester College is on the other side of Edgar Road to the site. So if this house were built, it would be directly opposite that part of Dubuhaus, which has the boys' dormitories in it. So they'd be just across the street and they'd look straight into the boys' dormitories. And when I mentioned this to the housemaster weeks ago, I mean, he turned white. It's, you know, it sounds like a small thing. Let's ask your question.
Thank you. Any further clarification? No, so thank you very much for coming along today. The next public speaker we have is one of the Ward Councilors, Councillor Charles Radcliffe. Good morning. And when you're ready, Councillor Radcliffe, you have five minutes.
Thank you very much Chair and good morning everyone. I've been approached by several residents living near Number 10 St Cross Road and asked to convey their concerns about this application. First, I'd note that the council has received 26 letters of objection and none at all in support. And that in itself is an indication of community sentiment that I hope will inform the committee's approach to the decision before it. For the most part, the concerns the residents centre not so much on the design of the proposed house, but its impact on neighbouring homes and the people who live there. At four stories to the rear, a house would loom over its immediate surroundings, rocking sunlight and, in the case of at least one immediate neighbour, daylight. Its rear windows and balconies would allow future occupants to gaze directly into the patchwork of back gardens to the south and east, violating the privacy of those living nearby. As an apparent gesture, the developers are proposing to use an opaque glass in the largest of the balconies. But that doesn't change the fact that anyone using that balcony, or indeed standing near any of the windows or Juliette balconies on the upper levels, will have views directly into the kitchens, living rooms and bedrooms of several of their neighbours. I understand the nearby Liberty Muse development was originally proposed with similar high-level terraces, which were not permitted by planning. And that's a decision that might be seen as a precedent, for present purposes. As we've heard from the previous speaker, in the case of one near neighbour, the loss of privacy is also raising child safeguarding concerns since the front windows of the new house look directly into a boys' dormitory Winchester College property on the opposite side of the road. Loss of privacy and other amenities is something to be weighed in deciding any planning application. Now, the planning officer suggests that in this case, such a loss does not meet the threshold of substantial harm. The residents who are being asked to suffer that loss would disagree very strongly. There's also the question of overdevelopment. The applicants wish to build on a very small, very narrow plot of land. The architects did well to find a way to cram a four-storey, three-bedroom house into the small space available, but they can't be expected to work miracles. Defenders of the scheme might point to the densely developed plot immediately to the north of this one. But that was a large brownfield site, a former snooker hall and car park, not a strip, a narrow strip of garden behind a Georgian house as in this case. Number 10 St Cross Road, behind which the applicants wish to build, is the first in a row of Georgian terraced homes, each with a long garden stretching back to Edgar Road. No other homeowner in the row has sought to divide up and develop their back gardens. The owners of Number 10 are the first to attempt to do so. So approval today would set a precedent locally, potentially paving the way for further infill and backyard building in the future. Finally, as we've heard, there are concerns too about drainage, about waste and parking. The plans assume new drains running beneath two neighbouring properties. They also assume that waste and recycling bins for Number 10 will be stored in front of the house, cluttering up the streetscape of St Cross Road. And with the existing garages to be demolished and not replaced, there are fears too for more pressure being put on the already oversubscribed on-street parking. Lots of questions, very few satisfactory answers. I'd ask my fellow councillors to reflect carefully and, before making any decision today, seek responses to these important concerns from residents. Ultimately, the question that should guide us here is whether the loss of privacy and other amenities, the risk of overdevelopment and the impact on the character of this street are, when taken together, of sufficient concern to justify withholding planning permission in this case. And to those who stand to be most directly affected by this development, the answer to that question is unequivocally yes. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Members, any further questions or clarification for Councillor Radcliffe? No, certainly, oh, Councillor Rutter.
Sorry Chair, thank you, Councillor Radcliffe. I'm slightly concerned about the overlooking issue of Dubuhaus. And Edgar Road isn't particularly wide, is it? It's quite a narrow road. But one of the new, at least one of the new terraced houses, which also have, you know, windows in the roof space, that sort of reason, so, effectively overlooks Dubuhaus, according to this plan that I'm looking at. So do you think that it's seriously a consideration that we, you know, we need to raise with the officer?
Thank you, Councillor Rutter. My understanding is that this house, if it's approved on the basis of the current design, would look directly into the boys' dormitories. The existing house is further to the side and I believe only has an indirect kind of oblique view into that part of the house. But others, residents who have a better knowledge of the streetscape can correct me.
Yeah, I mean, the end, if I may speak, the end house of the new terrace is just at the end of Dubuhaus and doesn't look into the ruins at all.
Okay. I don't normally let people come in after they've had their day, but for clarification for the members, that was fine. So we have one last speaker. I believe the agent has Covid, so can't be with us today. So we have Jack Sowden, is it, as a replacement? Good morning. You have three minutes. When you start speaking, the clock will come onto the screen. And so when you're ready.
Good morning, everybody. The survey scheme represents a direct response to the site, streetscape and wider conservation area. It has been informed by research and input from a consultant team and feedback received during the planning process. Formal pre-apparise was sought at an initial stage alongside attendance at a planning designer review panel, where the design and principles of development were reviewed in detail. The presented design has been adapted and redesigned in direct response from these meetings. The new building is proposed in place of two dilapidated garages that are of no contribution to the area. In place of these garages, a three-bedroom family house is proposed, continuing the run of development already established by the terraces to the north and the south. The proposed building is by nature of greater mass than the existing garages, but has been carefully considered against the existing Edgar Road streetscape and is proposed to step down in height from the houses to the north. The proposed design and appearance also seeks to positively contribute to the local streetscape and wider conservation area and a detailed analysis has been undertaken to inform this design. The new building proposes to respond to immediate neighbouring design queues, offering the use of bay windows at ground floor and also decorative brick relief panels. The proposed property looks to sit comfortably alongside its neighbours through the use of matching window sizes and proportions. The building is proposed to be constructed from high-quality red slips which reflect the residential terrace run on St Cross, as well as Dubuhaus and immediate adjacent terraces on Edgar Road. The house is also designed with suitable sustainability principles at heart and in line with the pre-application feedback. An internal garage has been omitted. Ample bike storage is provided in the rear alongside the bin and refuge storage area. Amenity space is provided for the new house through a rear southeast-facing garden alongside a small balcony. As part of the planning process, it has been agreed that a series of opaque screens to a height of 2.2 metres have been added, 1.4 to the rear. The development and immediate neighbours will be protected by relevant party ballacts throughout the development process. Overall, therefore, the proposed scheme offers the opportunity to improve the site and become a high-quality house for the local area. I would just add two points from this morning, that I do personally live in Winchester. I'm Sleepers Hill, so just half a mile up the road. And also, we did have a drainage survey carried out from a local professional and it was a 16-inch main, which is probably twice the size that they rely on. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much. There may be questions from the committee. Councillor Rutter.
Thank you Chair. Yes, I think, who knows about the drainage thing? I think it's covered by a condition and you won't be allowed to build it unless it's agreed by Southern Water and presumably they won't agree unless it's functioning so. But this balustrade thing, it's supposed to stop overlooking from the rear of this Juliette-proper balcony. But we've been told it's 1.4 metres high. Is it on top of a brick base to make it higher? So that actually you can't see over it, unless you're a V-claw?
The side flanks from floor to the top of the opaque is 2.2 metres.
Right.
And the rear is 1.4. The rear is purely if you're sat on a sofa, that you wouldn't be able to see anybody's paddles the sides or if you're stood on the balcony outside.
Sorry, if you're stood on the balcony, you will be able to see it.
At 1.4, you'd be able to see above, only on a vision of that kind of, so you can't just look out the side. No, both sides are 2.2 metres tall.
But the actual back is only 1.4. All right, thank you.
Councillor Eamon.
Thank you Chair. We were hearing about the drains, which I haven't seen about the other things.
Councillor Eamon, could you talk a little louder? Sorry. Thank you.
My concern is apart from the drains and the other things is the bins. How do you propose to store them? Because we're here that they're supposed to be left on the road. It's not satisfactory idea.
As per the drawing, the bins are stored at the back and then pulled round the side of the property. There is nothing to get that, is there?
There is.
Thank you. I was going to ask about the balcony. Then you did mention Mr Sowden's Southern Water. In our report, it says Southern Water requires a formal application to the public fouse to be made by the applicant or developer. Has that been done?
So we've had an initial feasibility survey carried out with a camera system and a drawing marked to ensure that it was physically possible. So from there, if it's granted, we don't have to engage with Southern Water to say we want connecting to them.
Another concern which has come up in letters of objection to us has been the site of the refuse bins. So they are in an enclosed container, are they?
Yes, so effectively the rear garden is effectively a courtyard garden with six-foot, seven-foot walls each side. The bins will be within a section within that rear garden.
Okay, thank you. And going back to the balcony, I know you gave the measurements to Councillor Rutter. but are you quite satisfied that there will not be the overlooking that residents have feared?
Yes, and for the reason that the new terrace just to the north actually has a side window looking that way. This development doesn't have any windows looking that way and it has a 2.2 balcony screen on that side. So I personally believe that there will be less, not more.
Okay, thank you. We'll probably come back to that. Councillor Pearson.
Question, Mr Futur. The bin store, is it, I noticed in the plans it's for two bins. Are you aware that the city council has three bins and Shorting will have four?
No, I'm not, but there's still adequate space.
I think part of the problem is the impact of the bin storage area on number 10, rather than the actual facilities for bin storage on the new house. And I don't think we've seen, I think we are concerned that the bins for number 10 will now have to be stored on the road. Is that the case? And is there any consideration of amending that?
The bins for number 10 currently are not stored on the proposed site plan of this property. It's an overgrown garden and double garage. There's no bins on this property. So I don't know where the bins are for number 10, but they are definitely not within the boundary of what we propose. The local may well know where the bins are, but they are definitely not on this proposed site.
I can answer that.
I'm sorry.
If you want an answer, I can answer that.
Just for clarification, because normally you have...
I need your door.
Yeah, but we'll come to that with the case officer, listening to our concerns. And I have already flagged off with her that that is a concern that I want to discuss today. Right, so have we got, if you could turn your microphone off. Sorry, Mr Carlton.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm slightly deaf. I just wanted to explain.
No, no, thank you.
There are two sets of bins, though. There's one for the proposal.
Please, Mr Carter, could you not contribute anymore? Thank you very much. Members, have we finished asking supplementary questions? Right, so we will now go to the case officer. Cat, is there anything that you'd like to tell us about, bring up? Or we go to discuss it in sections?
Thank you, Chair. Clarification regarding the bins for the existing property. I believe that they are stored at the front of the property, so St Cross Road side. There's a small sort of garden, sort of paved area. And that is where they will be stored, continue to be stored when the new development, if it's permitted.
No, I'm sorry. I have been giving you a lot of attitude. But I'm sorry, the case officer has said something and we must take what she's done. Please, Mr Carter. All right, Mr Carter, tell us what you think is going to happen to the bins of number 10.
The bins of number 10 are currently kept at the back with their rear exit cut off by the new proposed building. They will have to be stored on the front steps at 10 St Cross Road, on the St Cross Road side. It's a very, very small, narrow area. They currently have three bins. They may well have four or five. So those are going to be stuck there on the front of our row of terraces. And also, there's no bin collection on the front of St Cross Road.
Thank you very much for that clarification. But this isn't the application that we're discussing. We're discussing the new.
Chair, yes, sorry if I got, I was mistaken about where they're currently stored. But certainly, if the plan is, if the application is approved, the bins for number 10 will be stored to the front on the St Cross Road area.
As happens throughout the district.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, would you like me to address the Children's Act point that was raised in the overlooking about Dubulais House?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think based on what Mr Carter said, it's difficult to see how the Children's Act would be breached by the planning application. And I direct you to look at that address as a material planning consideration, the degree of overlooking, rather than specifically a breach of a legislation. And I think on that you need to be guided by your professional planning. So we'll probably later on be able to give you some directed advice on whether she regards the degree of overlooking to be material. But it ultimately is up to the committee to decide how much weight to give to that factor.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. And that will come up on to the impact of the name of the property. Right, so we, if I have anything else you need to...
Thank you, Chair. I can actually bring up, if it would help, the sections again, which show the relationship between Dubulais and the proposed dwelling, if that helps at all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we turn now to the report, Principle of Development onwards, that's on page 19. This is within the Winchester development boundary. So I don't suppose there are any questions on the principle of development? If not, then would we look at the next two sections, Design and Layout and Archaeology? Could I just ask about the basement, which doesn't seem to have any windows?
Thank you, Chair. And there's no windows to the front of the basement. I think that there are doors. Sorry, just to get the plan up. Yeah, there are doors on the, within the garden side. So because of the change of levels from Edgar Road down into the site, you wouldn't appreciate the basement elevation from the road. But once you're in the garden of the site, you'd appreciate that as a sort of basement story. And there are two doors, sets of glazed doors at the, on the basement level looking into the garden.
Thank you. Any further questions on those two sections, Design, Layout and Archaeology? If not, we'll go on to the next one, which seems to councillor Reed.
I'm still concerned about this overlooking element from the balcony. If one looks, does it? Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Go ahead, because I have just moved on to that.
If you view the proposed site plan, it is quite clear that if you are in the front, back of property, overlooking the forefoot, you will have a vision into the property to your left. Now, how much of a view we get of that mark, well, there's some question marks over that. Because the balcony is quite high in relation to the rest of the properties around.
And Mrs Sutherland has just reminded us that we should be giving weight to whether it's a direct view or an oblique view.
Cat? Thank you, Chair. Councillor Reed, are you on the site plan, are you looking at the new terrace adjacent to the site? Is that what you were saying about? Radley House, yeah, okay. It's, yeah, Radley House is a sort of a recent development. Part of that development was for this new terrace to the north of the existing site. There are, as part of the balcony, there are 2.2-metre-high opaque glazed screens, which will obscure queues immediately to the side. So there's not, it would be an oblique view into that side and the same on the opposite side. So, yeah, the 2.2-metre-high screens will help to avoid direct table and heating towards that property.
Chair, I quite accept that. It's the fact, in general, it is a very high balcony. You've got two floors below. And it's on a hill, radiant, that we give it an overbearing appearance. It's, the one thing I said right at the beginning, it's very strange and it becomes a bedroom. One would have expected a balcony of the lounge, but that's beside the point. It's just the fact that the height of the balcony itself will give that additional views that you wouldn't normally get into a bedroom.
Thank you, Chair. It's not unusual to have a balcony on a dwelling within the settlement boundary, obviously. Each one has to be assessed on its own merits in terms of, is it going to impact significantly or cause harm to the amenity? I have looked at that quite carefully. There will be some overlooking, there'll be some overlooking towards the rear of number 10 as well. But given what the balcony will be used for, I would anticipate most people using it would perhaps be sat out on a sunny day. It's not something that's going to be used all year round, presumably. And so along with the mitigation by screening, I've assessed that the level of harm caused by overlooking would not be so significant as to justify refusal of the application on that ground. Thank you.
Councillor Rutter? Thank you, Chair. And we've had some concern about overlooking in the other direction, across the road to the school building and into dormitories. Now, I can see that the only windows that actually look out to the front are from a ground floor office, a first floor, small bedroom and the hallway, and a dormer window from the main bedroom on the top floor. Do you consider that there will be an overlooking issue from this new house, potentially? Or have you, I mean, presumably you've considered this?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I have taken that into consideration. It's, there's no sort of direct, there would be overlooking towards or looking towards the Dubulais. But given the uses of the rooms in question and office, I think there was an en suite and a bedroom there, and given the distance from Dubulais, again, I've assessed that there wouldn't be significant harm in terms of overlooking towards that property.
Okay, councillor Rutter. Could I just ask about the wall, the blank wall which Mr Carter brought up, which will be next to him? There's only one way to alleviate that problem would be to have put windows in, which would provide overlooking.
You could, so sorry, are you saying the blank wall, that windows could go into that? Yeah. I think those were removed just to to make sure that there was no overlooking towards the immediate adjoining property. So they're all in a sort of a row at similar heights and similar positions. So the windows were not included on the side elevations to try and avoid any overlooking between the sides of each of the dwellings and towards the immediate rear of the neighbouring property.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on this section, which is quite a large section, the impact on the character of the area and neighbouring properties? Well, councillor Levy, thank you.
Yeah. There's going to be some impact with these bins to number 10, as far as I can see. Because you're proposing on this application, they're stored at the front and put onto the main road in St Cross, where there's no bin collection going on. Is that true?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure, are you suggesting that the bin lorry doesn't service bins on St Cross Road?
Quite obvious the question, bins from this area will put it out on the back lawn and feel good. So this would be a different one from where else?
I can't answer for sure because I don't know whether or not there's a, there's no bin collection on St Cross Road. I know the majority probably for convenience put their bins out rear of the property. But I would find it odd if there was no bin collection on the St Cross Road, but I don't know the answer to that, I would say.
I was just checking with Mrs Pinnock about whether we should be considering what happens at number 10. I know it's a knock-on effect, but I don't think we could base the refusal of bins being outside number 10. Or has it...
Impact really.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So if there are no further questions, we'll just go on to the last page, which is landscape and trees, highways and parking, and then nitrate and dequality. Any questions there? And any questions on the conditions?
Councillor Rutter? Is there any consideration of biodiversity net gain on this one? I can't see any mention, for instance, of swift boxes, which might be something that we could incorporate into this dwelling at little cost. But swifts do like to roost in roof spaces, just under the leaves and things. Otherwise, I mean, it's a fairly, built over space at the moment already anyway, perhaps a bit of the garden, but that's going to become a paved terrace. So there's actually a biodiversity reduction, isn't there? And I thought that was against policy now, so I'm thinking, that's my question, is there any net gain?
Thank you, Chair. There was no specific measures put in for biodiversity. I don't think it's, you know, we can, we could include the provision of swift boxes, for instance, within one of the landscape conditions as something to be, and, you know, there's not really a lot of landscaping going on on the site because of the nature of the site. But certainly, you know, if people are in agreement, I'd be happy to amend maybe the soft landscaping condition to include the provision of swift boxes or any other mitigation that the committee thinks would be appropriate.
Well, swift boxes, as you know, is my sort of latest ambition. So I, for one, would like to see some sort of biodiversity and swift boxes, yes. I don't know about the rest of the committee.
There aren't any else in the book.
Councillor Levy?
Yes, on the conditions, we've got a bit about the drains. But what happens if Southern Water decide that they don't want it completely done? Was this a real application or was that a default?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, if Southern Water are not happy with the drainage arrangements proposed, then, yeah, the house can't be built effectively. So, yeah, we potentially, we could grant permission from the planning side. But if it doesn't comply with Southern Water regulations, then that trumps any other consent.
Yeah, because we're here that there's a drainage problem there or other parts of the right side. We don't really want to inflict... We don't really want to inflict, definitely going to create this.
Thank you, Chair. No, I think the agent has also explained that inspiration has already been undertaken into the mains and sewer. So it does seem that they are working on a work to ensure that they do comply with the southern water regulations. But that would be a separate matter for them and southern water. But also, I should just point out that there's a drainage condition. It's number eight on page 23. So the applicant would need to submit full details of power and surface water drainage in order to have that additional discharge. So we do retain an element of control over that, but the principle of it would be down to the discussion with southern water, yeah.
Okay. If there are no further questions, then we'll go into debate.
Councillor Rutter?
Thanks, Chair, I thought I'd probably have to kick this off. It's not an easy one because I can see the impact on the neighbourhood and the concerns of residents. And I'm very grateful to you all for coming along today and raising those. But I think it's clear that there are no planning reasons that we could put forward to refuse this application that would not be overturned by a planning inspector. So they wouldn't stand up against an inspector's rigorous considerations. This is the centre of Winchester, it's highly developed. There is a presumption in favour of new developments, if there's any possibility of it being squeezed in. And that's what this is being, it's being squeezed in. It'll be less unattractive. It'll be much more attractive than the existing garages, which are quite unsightly. I am concerned about the impact on Number 10 in that some of their amenity land is being taken away, although it's clearly not used because it's completely overgrown. And the possible impact on storage of bins and so on out there. But that's not part of this application sadly, otherwise we could condition some proper, you know, storage method for the bins. We can't do that. So I, and the balustrade issue. Okay, so if you're standing on the balcony, you can just see absolutely directly behind the house down to Number 10. But you won't be able to see much towards the sides. And when you're sitting on the balconies, which is what most people will do, and that's the normal use of that sort of balcony, you won't be able to see over the balustrade at all. In terms of overlooking to bouleys, well, as I say, I think that the actual rooms that are looking in the direction of the school buildings are only an office, a small bedroom, a corridor and the upstairs room. But it's one of the fairly high dormer windows. So I can't see that that's going to be an issue, people won't be standing at those windows, they're just for lighting the bedrooms. In fact, that probably the overlooking might be the other way from the school, I don't. I don't, I don't think that's a worry really. I am worried that there hasn't been any consultation with other neighbours. And I wish that the developer was, as a matter of course and courtesy, in future, please speak to your new, you know, the neighbours who will be affected by these sorts of developments. It's very important that their considerations and their concerns are taken into consideration. I would support an attempt to put in a swift box if that's possible and appropriate, I think it might be. We don't do enough to encourage biodiversity and that would be a small contribution. And perhaps a few trees and big pots in the back terrace area would be lovely. So in terms of planning, I'm afraid I can't see any reason to refuse this application. So I will be supporting the offer of recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other contributions? Councillor Levy?
Thank you, Chair. There are lots of things that have little questions against it on this particular development. Overlooking is one, because people do stand on balconies when they have the property and that's what things can give you problems.
Councillor Levy, request will you just speak louder, please, or move the microphone even further?
Yeah, sorry about that. I am concerned about what's going on here. I think it's something that's been shironed into a very small space. I think the overlooking is a problem. I think we've covered the drainage. I'm worried about the bin collections, I'm worried about the overlooking. And when I do this together, I don't think I could support this because I think the impact on the local neighbourhood is too great.
Thank you. Any further contribution? Councillor Reed?
Chair, I still have some concerns of my own with the delta of this, one is the overlooking of the dormitory area. Edgar Road is not terribly white, so whatever windows are opposite, one in the factors of bedroom, is going to have an adverse effect. I would imagine the college is going to be somewhat concerned, obviously. One thing that we haven't really dealt with as such is really the parking issue. This will present an additional parking on the highway, which in itself is probably not terribly good because it's a narrow road in that area. I disagree that the bin storage of Number 10 is not recounted. In a sense, this application gives an adverse effect to a neighbouring property. The bins coming in front, if there is a bin collection at the front of St Cross Road, then that is a bit of a concern to obviously the residents themselves. That'll obviously have to be dealt with outside. I'm not sure I can go along with the recommendation. I know well the fact of stone, this.
I will just add a few comments. I do agree with Councillor Rutter that it's within the city boundary. The applicant has taken pre-up advice. And we're looking as a planning committee to material planning reasons. And I personally can't see any material planning reasons to refuse this application. I think it fits in with the street seat, ideally, I'm not terribly keen on four-storey, but it isn't higher than the property next to it. We've explored the southern water and we've got a condition, condition eight, that if the applicant hasn't sorted that out with southern water, then the property can't be built. We've explored the overlooking, there is bound to be some overlooking, but not to the extent that I think that residents are worried about. And we have a very experienced case officer who's spent some time looking at that issue. Of course, at the moment, there's just a space there or just the garages. So anything that goes in there is going to cause some objection from local residents. But I repeat that, you know, if we're going to refuse it, it has to be on material planning grounds. And as I said, I just can't see any there. So we'll go to the vote. This application has been recommended for approval. Those in favour, please show.
Five members, Chair.
And those against?
One against.
And those abstaining?
Two abstentions.
So that application is approved.
Chair, that beat with an amendment to the condition.
Yeah.
I think Cat was recommending that the landscape condition 13 be amended to require details of swifts as well.
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot that.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, amending condition 30 to include swift boxes. We will have a five-minute break now because it's quite a lot of sanitation, sanitising to go on. So thank you very much for coming along today. Thank you.
I saw the previous spots where people have been here before, the last application. I won't go through all the names, but round the table are the members of the committee, they've all got their names up, and on the table up here there is myself, Theresa Evans, Chair of Planning, my Vice Chair, Councilor Rutter, Julie Phillips, Service Lead for the Belt Environment, then Fiona Sullivan, who's our legal representative, Matthew Watson, who's doing the clerking for this, and the case officer always sits in the seat there, and the case officer will be Rose Blister, is Rose Blister. No fire drill anticipated, should there be a fire alarm, please just follow the instructions you're given. The Assembly point is out in Abbey Gardens, and please could you make sure that your mobile phones are turned off or put onto silent. So we move on to Agenda Item 7, which is 21/02199/FUR, which is erection of a four-bedroom dwelling with associated vehicle access at 112 Take Down Meads in Winchester. The case officer is Rose Blister, and before we go into Rose's presentation, I just wanted to remind everybody that this is being recorded and livestreamed, and that afterwards a video recorder will be recording, will be put on the council's YouTube. There is a written sheet on your chairs which reminds you of that. So Rose, over to you when you're ready.
Thank you Chair. Just as a verbal update Chair, I was, I think it might be worth amending Condition 6 for the landscaping to include swift foxes to avoid biodiversity. The landscaping condition, Condition 6, this is the landscaping condition on page 53.
So you're amending Condition 6?
To include the prohibited swift foxes in the landscaping plan.
And on the update sheet, oh no, no, that's a different application. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Here we have the red line down. At the point of the cursor here is Hillside Road, running north-east of the site, and here at the bottom of the screen we have Take Down Meads running to the south.
Rose, I wondered if you could just speak just slightly louder, or move the microphone nearer to you.
Apologies, I'm losing my voice.
Thank you.
Here we have an aerial view of the site. The application site is located here at the point of the cursor. Here we have the site plan, where we can see the staggered, the proposed staggered building line leading into Hillside Road. Number 112, which is here at the point of the cursor, is approximately four metres from Hillside Road on its side elevation. Excuse me. The proposed new dwelling is approximately 6.5 metres from the road at its closest point, and number two Hillside Road is approximately 8.5 metres from Hillside Road at its closest point. So there would be a staggered introduction into Hillside Road as a result of this proposal. On the right-hand side you can see a coloured site plan with the new dwelling as proposed. This area to the north of the site would be a double garage with a green roof. Two parking spaces are proposed at the front and two within the garage book. Here we have the proposed street scene. The proposed dwelling is slightly larger than that at number two Hillside Road due to the roof hitch. However, there are some level changes proposed to make the site level, which would require removing a significant amount of earth. This has been proposed to be conditioned via a construction management plan. Here we have the proposed front elevation. Materials are proposed to be buff brick with black or grey windows, and slate roof. The materials' condition is proposed at Condition 3, as there is a general character of tiled roofs rather than slate, and therefore while slate is included in the high-quality places, it's not considered to be characteristic of this area. Therefore, we'd like to see a clay or concrete tile submitted as part of Condition 3 provided this application's approved. Here we have the proposed side elevation. This would face number two Hillside Road. There is one obscure glazed window on the first floor that would serve the hallway. There is one roof light that would serve one of the bedrooms, and there is a glazed door to the ground level serving the study. This is the proposed rear elevation. Two high-level windows were included as part of the application under amended plans. This is to increase light levels into one of the bedrooms at the back of the house, and into the study on the ground floor. These are conditioned to be a minimum of 4.7 metres above the floor level, to prevent overlooking to the rear property. And you can see this red line here at the point of the cursor is the existing ground level. Therefore, the black line at the bottom here is the new proposed ground level. A level's condition has been suggested. Here we have the rear elevation, or sorry, the side elevation. This would face number 112 Take Down Meads. While the majority of the windows would face number 112, and to a lesser extent 114, it's considered that there is sufficient distance between the proposed dwelling and the existing to prevent overlooking. Here we have proposed floor plans. As you can see at the point of the cursor here is the study with the new high-level window, and on the first floor is the high-level window shown here. We'll move on to some photos of the site and area. Excuse me. At the top here is a view of the site from Hillside Road. This tree you can see at the top corner, this would be retained. At the bottom, this is a view of the site looking up the hill from Hillside Road, looking towards 112 at the point of the cursor here, and 114 at the point of the cursor here. Here we have a view looking down the hill along Hillside Road, where you can see number two Hillside Road here, and 112 Take Down Meads here. At the bottom, this is another angle from approximately the starting point of where the existing garden would be subdivided. This tree would be retained. You can see number two Hillside Road going down the hill, and it's dropped down in levels. Some photos from within the site. At the top here, this pole is approximately where the new plot would be divided. Looking towards number two Hillside Road, they have one first-floor window which, I understand, serves a bedroom. At the bottom here is taken from a little bit earlier, where there's some substantial planting. Much of this no longer exists. You can see, looking towards Hillside Road going down, you can appreciate some of the level changes. Here at the top, we have the view of the rear of 112 Take Down Meads, and at the bottom here you can see number 112 Take Down Meads and number 114 Take Down Meads. Just as another verbal update for you, Chair, this site was subject to a previous application that was dismissed at appeal. Just as reference, this was the previous application for a pair of semi-detached chalet-style bungalows. Previous application was dismissed due to the impact on the character of the area by creating these much smaller plots in account to whether there is a significant number of larger, more generous plots in the area. The recommendation is to permit. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. And we move on to the public speaking. And first of all, objection, Mr John Nixon. Good morning, Mr Nixon. And so you have three minutes. If you press the button at the bottom of the microphone.
Thank you Chair, and good morning. This current planning application does not address the reasons given by the planning inspector for the dismissal of the initial application in relation to maintaining the strong rhythm and spacious field of the street scene. The development is not in accordance with Policy DM16 of the Local Plan Part II, as it will not respond positively to the character, appearance and variety of the local environment. The proposed building line extends beyond the existing property building line on Hillside Road. The committee's report admits this, and admits that it is significantly in front of the Hillside Road building line. All of the 18 existing properties on this side of Hillside Road follow a clear and maintained building line. This breach of the line will be detrimental to the street scene, especially if the property is at the highest point of the road. The proposed height of the property is concerned, the roof height could be higher than the neighbouring house on the material side road, giving the property an overbearing aspect. I don't believe that the development is in accordance with Policy DM17 of the Local Plan Part II, as we will overlook and be overbearing for two Hillside Road, 114 and 110 Take Down Meads. We will suffer a significant loss of privacy, both inside the rear of our property and in the garden. The committee's report does not consider the impact on 110 Take Down Meads, although this was referred to in the inspector's report back in April last year. The proposal is to reduce the level of the site by excavating soil at both ends of the plot. This might mitigate some of the impact of the house on neighbouring properties, but similar excavation conditions weren't adhered to in the case of the large construction in Hillside Cliffs resulting in an extremely overbearing property. It is likely that the existing host property on 112 Take Down Meads will be developed and extended. If this proposed application is approved, there will be two large houses on what was a single plot, and was one three-bedroom house. This will severely impact the open character of the area, creating a much higher density housing than elsewhere on Take Down and out-of-character for the area. Previous planning approvals for corner plots in the area have resulted in bungalows being built which have much less impact on both neighbouring properties and the spacious field of the street scene. Both of the corner plots on the junction of Goring Fields and Take Down Meads have bungalows in what was previously their back gardens. In conclusion, I think the proposed house is too large and too high for the plot. It could have a detrimental impact on neighbouring properties, and is not in keeping with the rest of the Take Down State, and contributes to the local poor. The only justification for such large development is profit for the developer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and well timed. Members, any questions of clarification for Mr Nixon? Councilor Reed?
Good morning Chair. You mentioned bungalows, and I'm a great supporter of bungalows. Where are the nearest bungalows in relation to this current site? The nearest bungalows that we've got, you know, virtually all two-story apartments.
Yes, if you go down Take Down Meads where it intersects Goring Fields, there are two bungalows which have been built some time ago on that garden, if I can.
Thank you.
Councilor Rutter? Thank you. You mentioned that, you're at number...
110.
Oh, that's, okay.
Which is on the corner, opposite.
Oh, on the corner opposite, okay. All right. So how do you think you're going to be overlooked?
Well, our back garden on the back of our house will be directly overlooked by the frontage of the new proposed property.
Right, okay, the frontage.
Yeah, if you look at the frontage, there are high-level windows which will overlook directly the back of our property and the garden.
Couple of bedroom windows.
I believe so.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any other questions of clarification? No. So thank you very much for coming along today. The next public speaker is one of the Ward Councilors, Councilor Calci Lerni. And when you're ready, Calci, you have five minutes.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'd like to thank the planning committee for the support they've given local residents in seeking a suitable template for the development of sensitive corner sites around the Take Down Estate. The committee's refusal of the previous application for two dwellings with very little amenity space was fully vindicated by the planning inspector at appeal. The inspector provided clear guidelines on how policy should be applied to these types of development, here and on other potential plots if they come forward. These include respect for the character of the area and provision of adequate amenity space on the remainder of the existing and new properties. Attention to build lines was also indicated, and alignment with the neighbourhood designer statement. Residents and Ward Councilors still have concerns which are reflected in the number of... of objections and the submission you have already heard. Local residents do not support the scale of development proposed and would be more supportive of a single bungalow, but I am pleased to see that in the officers' report conditions have been proposed dealing with many of the other issues raised. Condition 10, removing permitted development rights is welcome. The current application is, following the inspector's report, the largest quantum of development that could be supported on this subdivided plot. Condition 12, requiring adequate excavation to ensure the ridge height does not result in an overbearing building relative to neighbours, particularly at two Hillside, is also important. Experience nearby at Old Hillside, Hillside Close, where developers did not excavate according to the permitted plans resulted in a very dominant and overbearing house which could have been avoided. We also welcome the observations regarding the use of plain roof tiles and the conditional materials. I would like some clarification as to condition four and the lack of reference to foul as well as surface water drainage. Research by neighbours indicates it is likely a foul drain runs beneath the proposed building. Clearly it is to the benefit of the applicant if this is established at an early stage rather than partway through construction. I have had experience in Harestock on a similar plot of permission being granted but then never implemented due to the expense of diverting the sewer. In summary, although the size of the development is still questionable, councillors are grateful to officers for the intention they have paid, both to the issues raised in the inspector's report and to the concerns of local neighbours. Importantly, clearer guidelines are emerging for any future developments on similar plots on this estate. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Lerni. Any questions of clarification from the committee? councillor Benton.
Just a minor point really. You mentioned bungalows and how do bungalows keep up with the street scene if it's a single bungalow? I'm just a bit confused why would they be suggested?
I think that this is a challenge obviously for architects. I think certainly dormer bungalows are quite common in the area, neighbouring streets have a significant number of bungalows on them and it would just be something that I think that could meld more easily into the street scene than obviously a much larger modern building. But I do appreciate the point councillor Benton.
Any further questions for clarification? No, so thank you very much councillor Lerni for coming along. And then finally, we have Mr Lee Scott who is the agent. Mr Lee, you press the button and the light comes on and then when you're ready, the clock will come on the screen and when you start speaking, it will count down from three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. As you just heard, this application was preceded by a previous application for a pair of semi-detached houses on the same plot. That one was refused by this committee and the decision was upheld with appeal. In reaching this decision, the planning inspector was solely concerned about the impact on the character of the area. He had not raised any concerns in relation to highways, parking, neighbour immunity or indeed the principle of development since the site is located within a settlement boundary. In essence, the inspector thought that the size of the proposed plot was too cramped and therefore not in keeping with the character of the estate, who is also concerned about the building lines you just heard. So in working out the current proposals, we revisited the site and undertook a more fine-grained analysis of the take down estate. Since the proposed house will front onto Hillside Road, we also looked very closely at the prevailing building line along that street. Take down meets has a particular post-war character defined by relatively large houses within a spacious, open plan style layout that was popular at the time this house was built. Although there are some bungalows, most of the houses tend to be two-storey and either detached or semi-detached. So this creates a strong overriding character which allows for quite a lot of variety in the actual design of the houses. There have also been alterations made since the houses were built some 50 years ago and there are some examples of infill development on large corner plots, I'd say mainly houses but also bungalows, similar to that now being looked at. So in preparing the current application, we've taken on board the specific comments made by this committee and also by the inspector by now proposing a single detached dwelling set within a much more spacious plot. We've also set the house further back from the road. When we looked at the building line for Hillside Road, we found that the existing houses stepped slightly back and forward on that plot, albeit within a broadly linear arrangement. This staggering is part of the original layout and worked to slightly soften the appearance of what otherwise would be quite a regimented street. As shown on page eight of our planning statement, the proposal responds to that with a similar step between its immediate neighbours to the left and right. So because of this, we think that the proposed house will be perceived as complying with the prevailing building line on Hillside Road. We've also looked to reduce impact on neighbour residents as much as possible by pulling the main part of the building away from the neighbour of number two Hillside Road. And just to prove I've read it, the committee report mentions a bedroom window which is incorrect facing that property. The only window is actually halfway up a stair. We've also shown high level windows at the officers' request facing the 114 take down meets. So overall, we think that these changes combined with the overall design of the house produces an outcome that is much more in harmony with the surrounding area, which will possibly contribute to the character of the street and wider estate. We hope the committee agree that the proposed building represents a significant improvement and that you're able to lend your support to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much and again, well timed. So Rose, is there anything that you'd like to inform us about? Oh, yes, very important. Members, do you have any supplementary questions for the agent, Mr Scott? councillor Rota.
Thank you. The local councillor mentioned that there's some talk of opening a foul sewer across the land where you're planning to put this house. Would that be a problem and have you checked into that?
We have checked, yes. I'm understanding, we can't be certain until we start deening it up, but we've looked at the maps for the area. We understand there's a foul drain that runs down Hillside Road inside the glass verge. There's also, we believe, another private drain that runs along the backs of the houses on Hillside Road which runs through the garden with the neighbouring property at number 114. So we don't think there's anything actually in the garden at number 112, but there are drains nearby that we might obviously be able to key into. We'll obviously be careful of when excavating it, we don't want to make. Thank you.
Any further clarification? No, apologies for almost missing that out. Rose, anything you'd like to add? Okay. So we will move to the report. And this starts on page 48, principal development which is within the settlement boundary. Could I just ask, Rose? A lot of us are familiar with the site with the previous application which went to appeal and the inspector upheld the decision to refuse, but he didn't say deadly that there should be no building on this plot at all.
That's correct Chair. The main objection in regard to the previous application was the subdivision of the plots creating very modest plot sizes which would be contrary to the character of the area. He doesn't specifically say that development should be protected to this area.
Okay, thank you. There being no further questions on the principal development, shall we move then on to design and impact on the character of the area? Starts on page 48 and goes on to 49. councillor Edwards.
Thank you Chair. Really just a point of clarification. Towards the bottom of page 49, there's a reference to removing permitted development rights with regard to the roof. And I think that would be appropriate because this is already, we've commented, a large house on a smaller site. Can you just confirm that the roof of the garage, the flat roof, actual roof, I think, would be included within the area of roof which could not be further developed?
So the condition that I've proposed is that it would only address the main roof. I would consider that any proposal to build above the garage would be subject to another application. So that would have to be assessed at a later date under a new application rather than done through permitted development rights.
Okay councillor Levinge.
Yes, Rose, on this particular row, this would be one of the largest houses on it because most of them are smaller three bedroomed places, so you're treating the actual look of the area as well as the plot size.
There is a general building size that at the time would have achieved possibly around three bedrooms. However, a lot of the houses up and down this area have been enlarged over time to include additional bedrooms, so I wouldn't say that this building would be out of keeping with what is in the local area in terms of sales and sale.
Thank you.
councillor Rota.
Thank you Chair. One of the, the objector mentioned that he was concerned about what would happen at number 112, which would result in an even larger building there, but that's nothing to do with this application, is it? And we can't take that into consideration at all, can we?
Thank you Chair. And it's not proposed as part of this application. Should 112 wish to enlarge in any way later down the line, that would be subject to a separate application and would need to be assessed at that time.
So we move on to the next section. Which is impact on the name or the property. Sorry, impact on neighbouring properties. No questions? So all the other sections, so that's landscaping and trees, highways and parking, drainage, nitrates and equality. councillor Levinge.
I seem to remember on the previous application, the committee was quite concerned about the position of their bus stop relative to the house that was being proposed at that time. Is there any difference in the position of the property relative to the bus stop?
Thank you, sorry, I was just checking the previous map. And as I understand it, the previous application had two separate accesses that would face onto Hillside Road. This is proposing a singular access that is offset from the bus shelter. It has been assessed by Hampshire Highways and they found it to be acceptable.
Miss councillor Levinge, page 51, it does say that on the second paragraph. I know we had some concerns, but the iris officer asserts it's okay. And they are the satisfactory consulting. So that brings us, any questions on the conditions? We're amending condition six, aren't we? So that being, there being no further questions, that takes us to debate. Any debate? councillor Reed.
Thank you Chair. As I said, from the questions from the speakers, I support single story developments. However, in this case, I think this would fit reasonably well into what looks like an estate of late 1960s, early 1970s design properties. It's using a very similar brick as the walls, so it was not really that much of a contrast. And the change of the tile, the roof dressing would be supportive of that. The green roof on the garage is going to be interesting to see how that progresses. I rather like the idea. I cannot see anything of planning reasons why this can't be approved.
Thank you. Any further contributions? I think the applicant has taken on board a lot of our concerns from the application for the two houses, which was upheld by the inspector. I do understand that the local residents would prefer a bungalow, but I don't think in the street scene that was going to fit in terribly well. And I think, I too can't see any reason for material planning reasons for refusing this and I think it will fit in quite well into the environment and I think one house is the right decision rather than the two that were applied for before. So in the light of no further comments, this application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please show.
All members Chair.
Thank you, so that application has been approved. Thank you very much members of the public for coming along today. Got to put my microphone on. Good morning, I'm Theresa Evans, I am Chair of Planning and sitting next to me is my vice chair, councillor Jane Rutter. We have Julie Pinnock here as well, who's the Service Lead for the Built Environment, Fiona Sutherland, who's our legal representative, Matthew Watson, who is clerking for the meeting, and the case officer Nicola Clayton. Members of the committee are sitting down both sides of the tables and have their names in front of them. Fire drill, we're not expecting there to be a practice one, so if the fire alarm goes off, it's for real. Please follow instructions and do not use the lift. And the assembly point is out in Abbey Gardens. Please, could you turn your mobile phones off or put them on silent? I think that's all I need to say. Oh yes, and also just to remind you that this application is being livestreamed and recorded, and then the television recording will be uploaded to the council's YouTube after the meeting. So we come to agenda item eight, which is 20/00557/FUL. Provision of five buildings for B8 purposes and one for B1 purposes. Revision to planning permissions as stated on the application sheet at Selhurst sorry, Selhurst Poultry Farm, Portry Farm, Selhurst, Portry Farm, Heath Road, Soberton. And the case officer is Nicola Clayton. When you're ready, Nicola, for your presentation, we're ready to listen to you.
Thank you, Chair. If I could please start with a verbal update. I think it may be necessary to add a condition following highways advice. We understand that the internal road into the site and paths to the development remain private. However, to ensure that brays and footways are designed to minimum industry standards, we recommend a private management plan. And then this condition here will then allow for us to manage up for future use.
So that would be an extra condition?
That would be an additional condition, yes.
Thank you. Okay, and we've also got on the update sheet an amendment to condition five as well?
Yes, yeah, there was an error in the wording.
Thank you.
Thank you. So here it says to speak about the Selhurst Poultry Farm site on Heath Road. So here we have an aerial view of the site. The application is for five buildings that will be used for storage and one building that will be used for office use. So here's a photo of the existing site, looking at the site. And the building you can see there is one of the industrial buildings that has prior approval to be residential. And here's just another angle of the site, so here at the moment, no works have started on site. However, there were previous applications that permit four buildings on site for the same business purposes. And one of these building works has been implemented to therefore retain a fallback position. Here we have a couple of photos of the site, just so you can have an understanding of the site. These photos are on land adjoining where the industrial units are proposed. And this just shows the buildings at present, they're still in the business, none of them have been converted into residential. But they do have permission to do so. And a block plan of the site showing six buildings. This application is for, like I say, five buildings for the storage and the one office building. The previous fallback position here is that there was four buildings approved on site for business purposes, and they actually fall in the same part of the site. We could only have one of these schemes going forward, they sort of overlay on top of each other. So we couldn't have both applications approved and then move in and up with ten buildings, that would be possible. And this drawing here is to show that in red are the buildings that are residential uses and in blue are the business uses. And on here, it's a little difficult to see, but it's just to show the overlays here of the buildings, just to show that we couldn't have all the schemes being implemented. Here we have the elevations of the buildings. Here we go. So I just wanted to confirm that in the original scheme, we had a total footprint of 762 square metres. And the buildings on the, for approved buildings on site are the same height as the buildings of this application is for. So the buildings of this application, they're timber clad buildings, 8.5 metres in height to the bridge, five metres to the eaves and 15 by 10 metres of floor space. So we have two sets of elevations, but very minor changes, it's just the fenestration that's different. Here we have a photo from the access from Heath Road. And just looking from the site back to Heath Road, so that we can see the boundary treatments here, you can also see that there is a recreational and a playground and putting the access. And the development is considered acceptable subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we move on to the public speaking, and we have two public speakers today. An objector, Mr Nick Wallace. Good morning. Mr Wallace, there's a button at the bottom of the microphone, which when you press it, the red light comes on. And you have three minutes. The time will be displayed, it will go back to three minutes when you start speaking. The time is displayed on the screen in front of you. So when you're ready, off you go.
Okay. Well, the first thing I want to bring out is the development I'm perfectly happy with, it's my best concern. The thing is the size of the development, that's what's concerning me first. The buildings on site were provisioned for four new industrial buildings, and now it's gone back to increase the size of those buildings to six. The thing is that none of these buildings have actually been put up, and there's no business existing on site, and I can't see the reason why we need to add more industrial buildings when nothing's happened at all in the first place. And the one concern I had is that if we do do this, the amount of traffic that's generated would cause a lot of anxiety on the roads. I just heard Nicola saying that there was a condition that the road where you should be, have a management plan, but this is the first step I had to make. So that was one of the points I was bringing up in my response. The other thing is that obviously with this amount of traffic, I have tenants on site living in the house at the moment, and the next tenants are moving in very shortly. And we haven't been approached to discuss anything with the traffic management, and that is one of my biggest concerns. Also on the plan, you'll see that there is on the, obviously on the, one of the plans, as the access comes into the site, there's a bit of landscaping immediately on your left hand side. This area is a communal area, which I have the right to way over as a turning access for any vehicles coming into the site. And it's important that that's maintained because one for lorries turning, if the need be, fire engines and so forth. At the moment, it just looks like the access comes straight in, and our turning circle that belongs to our properties on the left, through on the left outside, would be compromised. So I think that landscaping needs to be removed and our standing left as one all the time, so we can use it. The other point I need to make a point of is that we have consent discharge from our properties, to go in the ditch around the property. And that ditch runs down on the west side, along the south west side. And I know that we've had a drainage condition to say that has to be approved by the council, but we need to make sure that the consent discharge that runs into it isn't obstructed any time while this is being done, because it could back up the system. So I think that needs to be addressed in the downrisky. The other concern I do have is the breaking down of the existing buildings on the site. There is some part of asbestos and concrete that needs to be taken into consideration, and I think that needs to be addressed seriously, because obviously the tenants on site, I don't want any problems with that. And I think that's really basically it, I was just considering.
Thank you. You've had your three minutes, so I think you've finished anyway. Yeah. Thank you very much. Any questions of clarification for Mr Wallace? No, doesn't look like it. So thank you very much indeed for coming along. And the other public speaker is a supporter, the agent, Mr Ian Donoghue. Good morning, Mr Donoghue. And you know the procedure, I know. So when you're ready, your three minutes will stop.
Chairman, councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. Before considering the merits of the application, I think it's important to understand the history of the site. Southern planning practice has worked on the site for many years, securing permissions for commercial uses from what were originally chicken sheds. So ironic that we actually work for Mr Wallace on this one. Sorry? Sorry?
It's difficult to hear you, Mr Wallace.
Sorry.
You can't move the microphone.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't realise you couldn't actually hear me.
Do you want me to reset it, Chair?
Okay.
Move the, start again.
Sorry.
Move the microphone nearer to you and then start again.
Is that it? Can you hear me now? Yeah, thank you. Obviously, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. Before considering the merits of the application, I think it's important to understand the history. Southern planning practice has worked on this site for many years, securing permissions for commercial uses from what were originally chicken sheds. To say somewhat ironic that we actually worked for Mr Wallace on the original applications. More recently, permissions were granted to demolish some of the older buildings and provide both replacement and new B8 and B1 buildings on the eastern part of the site. The new commercial buildings have no restrictive conditions in relation to hours of operation or noise. And one of the B8 buildings has now been implemented. Subscript to the permissions, the government introduced legislation to allow the conversion of commercial units to residential under prior notification. And so far, seven units on the western half of the site have been converted or have consent to be converted. And this includes three for Mr Wallace, which is on the left hand side of the site. Take account of the residential units, the applicant proposed a revised layout providing smaller units, which will be timber clad, to reflect the countryside location and the existing buildings on the site. The total floor space is slightly greater, approximately 18%, although this is actually spread over six buildings. However, these would be slated further from the residential units and Heath Road. On the site And the site in provides opportunity to provide an acoustic fence, which I think has been recommended by environmental health. On the application, it should be noted that there are no highway objections or landscape objections. And the proposal complies with policy M T R E four. The key benefits are an improved layout within the site, it's further away from residential properties, the opportunity to provide the acoustic fence and the opportunity for improved landscaping. I think the main issues have been fully addressed in the comprehensive officers report. I'm also conscious from the photographs do not portray a good image of the site at present. However, the applicant has been waiting for the decision on this application before he either commences or continues the original commercial permissions, or if this is granted, implements this permission. Just to pick up a few of the points from Mr Wallace, sort of thing. The size of development permissions are already being granted for four buildings of a very similar size. The amount of traffic generation, there are no objections from highways. The management plan, I must admit, this is the first I've heard of this, but I'm sure there will be ability for my client and Mr Wallace to work together, I would think, on securing access to the site. Drainage condition, I think there's a condition actually attached on the application, which we would comply with. And I think that, like I said, just Chairman, councillors, I ask you to support the recommendation and permit the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions of clarification for Mr Donoghue? Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair. Mr Donoghue, the, Mr Wallace referred to asbestos roofing, I think on the chicken sheds. But that's obviously a contamination. Nothing in here about the number of that, which no doubt the case officer will pick up on. Obviously, a plan of moving, yes?
I understand there is, but the asbestos is not on the buildings to be converted. It's only that there is some from a previously demolished building that's still on site, which I understand that the applicant is securing the right procedure to actually make sure that asbestos is actually moved from the site. There's no further buildings to be, sorry, yes, there is two buildings speeding up, sorry. But yes, the applicant will go through that, but I think that's under different legislation from the plan.
My second question, if I may, Chair. One of the issues in this area, as certainly Mr Wallace has brought up, is drainage. Not just on the site, but also farther down straight from the site. I'm assuming that the detailed plans about this, I've been talking with parish council about it, is that correct?
No, we've not talked to parish council about drainage. I mean, the original applications were granted without any drainage conditions on at all. Obviously, the ability of this revised application gives opportunity for further conditions like the acoustic fence, like drainage, to be added to the application. At the moment, we could build the buildings and we wouldn't have to comply with any sort of drainage requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask a question which makes reference to block plan of those six units on page eighty eight. If you'd have that on screen, it would be very helpful. And I'd just like to ask the agent if he could. No, that's not the one I mean, sorry, the one on page eighty eight before, yeah. That's an overall view of the site. I'm getting a little bit confused about which buildings are currently in residential use and which have existing permission to become residential. And it would be helpful if you could identify on that plan.
If we go from the left hand side, the three buildings, the, I'm sorry, would be in the west side of the site. The three that are not building red. Those three on the left, they belong to Mr Wallace. And I understand two of them have been converted and are existing residential use. And one is about the, yeah, which is the bottom left hand one. The two that are in solid red have permission to be demolished and rebuilt as they're used. But they've not been, the buildings haven't been demolished yet. And the two other red ones have just been given consent to be converted to residential. So at the moment, on site, there are only two that have actually been converted. And there are five that are ready to be converted or rebuilt.
Thank you. If we were to get back, thank you, if you anticipate any previous plan then, that I can see the three, I can see those buildings inside. And there also appears to be a large block in the centre.
That, that has now been demolished. That was one of the earlier permissions, that was demolished, decided to the bottom right hand corner of the site. Or permission for that.
Thank you for that, that's very helpful.
Any further questions? So, Mr Donoghue, this is quite a complex site to understand. So what will happen to the extent permission, you're just not going to implement it?
That is correct. I think is the case that was just said. I mean, if these granted permission, we couldn't build logs because they're actually sit on top. And I think it's one of the plans, it's not very clear to see. But the actual dotted lines of the original permission are shown underneath the actual plan of the six that have got permitted. So we couldn't do logs.
And did you mention an acoustic fence?
It was a requirement of environmental health. I mean, the reason I think the application has been with the authority for two years, for almost two years, and I think it was going quite smoothly. But when the government introduced and all the conversions to residential environment, the health are being concerned about the noise. And obviously, the negotiations with them, and it was intended that we would, well, we suggested we could put in an acoustic fence to actually address.
So where, where will that be?
That would be along the, it's not actually been formally defined yet, but the intention is to be along the left hand side of the houses, sort of houses. So you have the access road would be for the commercial units. And then the fence would be on the western side.
Okay. I couldn't see a condition on that.
There's another six. There's a condition, number six for the acoustic fence. And we haven't finalised all the details of it and my location, so that's one.
I'm mistaken. Thank you very much. Any further questions of clarification? No. So thank you very much, Mr Donoghue. Nicola, anything else you want to tell us before we go into questions on the report?
The only thing I was going to mention was that it's the health and safety exec that will be interested in asbestos on site, and they have actually been on site previously.
Okay, thank you. So if we look at the report, it starts on page seventy four, principles of development, with a fallback position after that. Any questions on that? Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. And you kept referring to the B eight, five units that are for B eight uses as storage. But it's not exclusively storage, does it? B eight can mean other things. And B one is, is that offices?
Yes. So in the conditions, we've conditioned that five units can be used for B eight, which is storage. Is it limited to storage on those units? And one for offices, because offices can be slightly more intensive use than the storage building. So we've actually got two conditions. One limiting them to office and storage. And then one limiting them to five for storage and one to office. So that they could all effectively be used for office, which is more intense than a storage use.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to continue, answer the Rutter's question a little further, if I may. B eight, you describe as storage in this document, but can also, I think, mean distribution. And I would suggest that this number of storage script distribution units could generate significant traffic, deliveries coming and going. I don't know what kind of distribution any might be contained. So I'm wondering, what's the basis for the assertion that making these, this is all, I'm jumping ahead, I admit here to page seventy nine, I'll admit, Chair. The assertion that the reason for having, yes, only one unit in office use, B one use, is to prevent harm to the highways by increasing traffic. It seems to me that it's the B eight units that would generate traffic. But I can see there are disagreements and I'd be very happy to understand better why. Thank you.
Chairman, if it would help, Chair, I think when the higher authority look at the traffic movements from a B eight use compared to a B one for use, there is proven data that shows that it's less intensive in terms of the comings and goings. I'm not saying that the nature of the vehicles may be different. But it is that storage, warehousing, and then the distribution of those goods. So in highway terms, the traffic use is deemed to be slightly less than kind of B one office, which is more comings and goings and more intensive use. So I think I understand what you're saying. But I think from a highway perspective, the higher authority wouldn't substantiate that argument. They look at various tricks data and modelling that demonstrates that it's deemed to be sort of a lesser use in that respect.
Well, obviously, I'm not a traffic expert, thanks for that. I can't question the highways authority. Other than to say that I think there is a difference between the kind of vans and cars that might be in a distribution operation and the passenger cars that might come to an office that are illegal.
Councillor Reed?
Sorry, Chair, this is really continuing here to go. And the B one, it's just classified as business, but there are various, there are three categories. Offices have been mentioned, but I don't think we should lose track. And there are two other elements that could operate from there under the business class use. B eight is, as correctly described, storage and distribution. But looking at page ninety for me, can you just clarify which is the B one? I'm taking it, it's the one with the parking immediately in the front, in the middle of the rest of the building. Would all be correct? Anything else in the logistics section?
One here.
Sorry. Please answer, Bethan.
I believe this is the one that shows the parking ground in central unit.
That's the one.
Yes, that's following off what Julie was saying. So on an assumption of that there's more parking around that unit, but that the actual condition just stipulates that one unit be used for office. So it could be any of those units.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Rutter? Thank you, Chair. Can I just confirm that, my understanding, does condition five, which has been reworded on the update sheet, does that restrict the units to business commercial use or the B eight, B one uses? And any move to change those new buildings to residential, given the history of the site, would have to be a separate planning application and subject to the policies of the local plan? Is that correct? It couldn't be done under the same basis that the other commercial buildings on site have been, are being transferred into residential use? It requires application, yes, you're right. Thank you.
Councillor Pearson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The, going back to this contamination of land, Nicola, can we have a condition to include, to make sure all contaminated material is removed from that site? Because it was known to have poultry farms, as you know, it's poultry sheds often had asbestos roofs, especially at that age.
Chair, I don't think we can overlap with other regulatory bodies. That would be the health, safety executive matter and not planning matters. So we couldn't overlap with that, Chair. It would be governed by other bodies, so there'd be no need for that condition.
We've had assurance of that, finally.
Shall we move on to design and layout impact on the I do press the button, it just doesn't come on. So shall we move on to the design and layout and the impact on the character of the area and neighbouring property? Could I just ask about the track? I presume because this site has a pre-existing application, we can't do anything about the track, because there doesn't seem to be a footpath along it for the children to use safely. They have to walk along the road used by vehicles. Is that correct? We can't do anything about that?
Let me just, I did try and get a photo from Google Streets, and so we could see this. I presume you mean to the play park here, shown on the screen.
Yes, the track, the entrance track.
Yes, so the actual entrance track is for access to the play park. There is a gate, there's a padlocked gate at the end of the entrance track. And access to the play park is actually near the houses, as I said.
So that would be the entrance for the children to go into the play park?
No.
Go to the left side. Go to the left side.
Any other questions on those sections? So then, the rest of these sections, the rest of the sections, landscape and trees, highways and parking. And we note that the highways have raised no objection to the proposal. Other matters, drainage and equality, or any of the conditions? Councillor Reed, qualified councillor Leany.
Chair, the first one is the landscaping. The second paragraph, indicative landscapers in the front of the units. We're not really, at least long term, sure exactly what is there going to be a permanent fence or is it just relying on trash and trash etcetera for that area? Because this is actually into the countryside. And the second point was down to the soaker ways. The reason for my concern with soaker ways is because my particular property is on soaker ways. And over the last four years, it has been exceedingly difficult with the amount of rain that's come down for it to clear. And two footsteps have returned to the mud. And I'm rather concerned that this has already got a high, an exceptionally high level. Is soaker ways going to be the answer? And so the question is, how deep is the placing? Thank you.
No, you go first. On the drainage, we have got a condition there. We've discussed this with our drainage officer. And I feel that we've put a condition on there relating to foul and surface drainage. And there is, the drainage officer was confident there's a solution and that we could put a condition on there and that would be then discharged.
Do we, sorry, Chair, do we know the depth of the seam, the placing?
No, I'm afraid not.
Is this a building control, Martin?
Chair, I think sometimes they overlap, don't they, those sort of issues? But I think what Nicola has suggested is a condition that requires details of that foul and surface water. So we can be satisfied there wouldn't be an impact at the site. And she's spoken to our drainage engineer, who's satisfied that can be resolved. So the technical scheme may be building trouble, but we want to make sure there's a solution there. there.
So that would be condition nine?
Happy with condition nine? Think that's adequate?
Yeah, I'm just raising a concern because of personal experience with the landscaping, please.
Councillor Leamy?
Thank you, Leamy.
Sorry, Chair, the landscaping.
Sorry?
Apologies, in terms of landscaping, there is obviously fencing already up to the site and there is, the actual proposal here and the condition relates to soft landscaping, hard fencing up to be on the site. And the scheme at the moment doesn't show any additional fencing apart from the acoustic fencing. But again, that would be something that needs, the scheme needs to come forward to us and something that's expected to be discharged.
Yeah, if we just go back to the drainage, we'll be hearing about the ditches that aren't adequate for drainage from the other part of the site. Are you including that into the condition of the drainage and that because we don't want water going away from the site and causing problems downstream? So, I have another question about the road. Are we going to put a condition on to make sure there's a maintenance plan in this to make sure it's covered and maintained properly for all sides?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I think I've picked up on the first one. We can't solve the problems of other sites by this application, we can make sure we don't exacerbate them. The drainage engineer will be well aware of those, so in terms of when we have details submitted to us, we'll be looking at that as part of that condition. So I think that's as far as I could sort of say we can go in terms of our legal planning authority.
So as mentioned at the beginning, we will propose an additional condition in relation to the road footpaths and though we would appreciate that they're under private ownership, we would require a private management plan onto this district.
Thank you. I was really concerned about the ditches that are draining from other things, other parts onto their particular parcels. They're all part of the same thing.
I could just ask, what difference is a private management plan going to make to the footpath stroke track?
Chair, and I think when, the reason Nicola suggested the additional condition at the beginning of the session, we looked back at Hampshire County Council's consultation, it's something based, although it's a private road, they want to make sure that the construction is made up to an acceptable standard. And I think then what they would want to see after that is that there's some maintenance regime and management, so the private plan would just explain to us how they propose to deal with that. So I think it's just a two-step. One, that it's constructed well enough for its use, you know, it won't sort of wither after, you know, a few heavy vehicles go over it. And two, how that will be managed because obviously there seem to be some shared uses there. So we can't control it, but we want to make sure we've got the details of that, so if there's a plan there.
Councillor Benton?
Thank you very much. Just raising a point that Mr Wallace raised about his access and parking and turning and the landscaping, is there some way that we can ensure that the development fits in with his needs as well? Because he has obviously made some clear objections from where he sees the landscaping and the track coming in at the moment. It's not clear exactly where it's going to be, so perhaps there needs to be some clarification on that to help him. I'm sure they must be able to work together on this if that's possible.
Chair, we'd like to see that and I think the agent indicated he'd work for Mr Wallace as well as the current applicant, so hopefully they're listening to that and I'm sure there'd be some sort of mutual arrangement they could do. We can only deal with this application site, but obviously when we get the details submitted to us for soft landscaping, we'll look at those and check they're appropriate for this site and, you know, how it links to adjacent sites, but we can't insist on something outside the site.
I just thought it was worth raising a point.
Thank you.
Could I just ask about condition eight? It does mention bat boxes and bird boxes, so hopefully that will include swift boxes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair, I thought you forgot the address, I could. I think a number of the questions I was concerned about have been raised. The highways issue, the entry side and the intersection, right? Just clarify from Mrs Binick, that the raising to industrial standard includes drainage. Because, I remind you, this track goes past the recreation ground on one side, which is children's recreation, and a football ground on the other side. So it's not just a question of how that gets onto the highway, which is what the highways people are talking about, it's actually the safety along that track. So can we have insurance that this is taken into account regarding this, the improvements of this highway, which is access for the, these B1, B8 buildings? And of course, for Mr Wallace's residential area?
Nicola, will the management plan include drainage?
Well, it needs to meet with minimum industrial standards, so I would hope that it's got to meet with that or it has to meet with Hampshire County Council's guidance. So I would like to say that it would, part of that would be looking at drainage and making sure that that road is usable and like Julie mentioned earlier, that this maintenance on that road.
Sort of out of our hands, Councillor.
The second part of my question is assurance about these drainage ditches. Drainage in this area is an issue. The county doesn't seem to recognise it, but it is an issue. And these drainage ditches, if they're allowed to silt up without a management plan, that is likely to happen, it's the clay cap area, I don't know how deep the clay is. And that is of course the issue, not from here, but also downstream to Newtown, which is where the stream goes towards that direction. So it's important that those ditches are maintained.
Yes.
Heads be for a management plan.
The question here is, who will oversee this management plan?
Chair, it would be a private management plan, so we are not the responsible authority for the management of those ditches, so all we can ask is for the details of how they propose to do that within the control of the applicant, so we would expect the applicant to set out how they would manage that.
So Mr Don and you, the agent, is listening.
As to what Mrs Binick said, it's also a planning duty to make sure the drainage downstream is not made worse by what you do on the other side. So it's a bit more from my perspective.
Yeah, I think.
Councillor Ross?
Thank you, Chair. I'm slightly concerned about the boundary with the children's play area. So we now hear that this access track is not used for access to the play area, but that boundary treatment at the moment does seem very flimsy. And as part of the biodiversity enhancement and the landscaping conditions, is it possible to include the condition, that at least consider putting a hedge planting along that boundary so that, and that would then help with air quality and noise coming from the access track and help to protect the children?
Well, I think if it's kept well clipped, it would be fine. I just think, I think, I'm concerned about that boundary treatment and I'm just wondering if we could include it in the condition, that's all.
I'm making a photograph, I don't know if we can go back to the, sorry, presentation.
Chair, and it's only a single track, so I'm not sure there's space to put any hedge again.
I just wonder as well, Chair, in some ways, actually the visibility between the two sites, maybe in terms of child safety as a parent or young children that may be in there, actually that degree of visibility plays this with safety rather than, you know, a hedgerow that looks to, I don't think there's space for hedgerow anyway. And I wonder if it would just be an impediment, you know, it's just my personal view there, but I don't think there's space, Chair, in a way for hedging.
With landscaping, narrow the track anyway, so that would leave even less room for vehicles to get along.
Yeah, that's correct, Chair.
I think we've probably gone as far as we can with the track. Any other questions on the rest of the report? If not, we're moving to debate? Debate?
Thank you, Chair. I think that, given that there's an existing planning permission on this site anyway, we really have no planning grounds on which to object to this. But I would like to say that I actually think this will be a significant improvement on the existing planning permission that is on the site. I think these new buildings are much more attractive in terms of the layout and the fact that, you know, there are six of them, they're all similar size and so on. I think it's a good use of the site. And I think that the new conditions, which will now be attached to this, to add to this development, significantly improve what's going to be built there. So the traffic management, the track, the access road, the landscaping, the biodiversity, all of those, excellent lighting conditions, the restriction on converting to, potentially converting to residential, all of those things are covered in our very extensive conditions. So I do think that what will arise from this will be actually a much better scheme, a much better development. And I think we've gone into it in great detail and I'm sure it will enhance the area and I know that there's a huge demand for these small to medium industrial style units. So I'm sure it'll be very welcome to the area and bring some more employment. And I welcome it, thank you.
Councillor Pearson?
Yes, thank you, Chair, well, it's almost what she said, no, because I wouldn't disagree with anything Councillor Ross has said, I'm just agreeing. Employment is always welcome in a village. Silverstone, like any other village, doesn't have enough employment sites. And any addition like this is very favorable. Equally, while not part of this application, Mr Wallace is doing sort of adjoining site, most part of his site is also welcome because it is more housing. I've expressed many of the issues that I have about the development of the site, which is welcome because it's a brownfield site, it's a wild. There's play in this area, while there's a formal playground, but children, big children, they will venture into wild areas and that is at a risk, particularly if you've got old buildings there, if you've got bits of debris on the ground, broken concrete as you can see, which is of course prime for wildlife as well. So while we want to enhance the biodiversity in this area, at the same time, we're introducing a sort of manicured biodiversity area as opposed to a wild one. I will leave Mr Crocker to debate whether it's, which is the better of the two. From a human point of view, the better is the manicured one with as much enhanced we can. I've expressed my concern about the drainage of the area and nothing should be done on this site that makes the drainage downstream worse. That is existing an issue, so if it's made worse, it's going to be, going to be a crisis. And maintenance of these ditches is a crucial thing. It is something that Silverton Parish is very active, Council Weston has got a group there, is busy making sure the drainage ditches throughout the parish, let alone this area are maintained. So clearly this site would come into her concern and rightly so. The, it's a clay cap here, as I've said, and that has an issue itself. The issue, another issue I have, which is inevitable, upgrading what effectively is a track now to get access, which is desirable, that, that might increase the risk for the children in their recreation ground, which is essentially for the affordable houses of the limits, as you both know, Chair, but also the football ground, which is just across the track from that children's playground. Now, that can be done, fencing or whatever, to make sure that that boundary isn't porous to keep separate the traffic, which in essence we can put down there, not just for the homes down there, but also for these new building sites. If these are covered by the conditions, I will be more than happy if the development actually takes place, because it's, you know, applications here have been hanging for quite a long time. So please let's get it done because we need that equipment and we need the ability for your neighbour to do what he wants to do, provide extra accommodation, which is equally desirable. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further contributions? Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chair. I'm saddened again that an area of land that's been developed adjacent to the countryside, we still haven't got proper plans to show what landscaping is going to be on the area. The concern about the flooding, possible flooding, will be exacerbated because of soakerways. In this present climate, there is more water coming down. Clay alone will allow so much throughout the time and so you're going to get a lot of surfacing. That will be run off into drainage ditches possibly and that will add to the problem further downstream. So a concern there. The only other concern I had was you've got storage and distribution as B8 and the majority of the buildings proposed are for that usage. Thing that strikes me is storage, by bringing stuff into storage usually means a large vehicle. Could it be a 40-foot trailer? I think it would have a torturous task getting down the track. Distribution, smaller ones going out, that seems fine. It's what's coming in that is a bit concerning. Highways haven't objected, so all we can do is cross off any of this in hope that they don't try to take full load of trailers down there because I think they may end up in some, small amount of problems. But otherwise, Chair, there's no other planning reasons not to bring up this application.
Thank you. Any further contributions to debate? So with the extra condition number 12, which is required, the county has said that they want a management plan on the track and the football. And then on our update sheet, we have an amendment to condition five. So with those two changes, this application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour, please share.
So members, Chair?
Thank you, so that application has been permitted. Thank you very much for coming along today. We have now arrived at lunch, so at time.